We've squared away and done this. All of these, this deck, even including this bump up, fall within this side setback and fall within this lake side setback. And then the same thing on this one over here. So everything falls within the setbacks.
Am I correct in saying this is new?
Oh, sorry, I got it.
This is new?
Well, it's all new.
This is new?
Yeah, yeah.
But it was here two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Because who thought it?
Is it?
No, 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 no. She's saying new from what's out there.
Correct, that's the question.
Yeah, so I'm saying this is all new.
Right.
Right, I understand. But this deck piece that you're referring to does not exist right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. But the setback is down on this one.
I understand, I don't have a problem. I'm just asking if that is new, the deck. It is, okay.
Right.
Board, wait, let me, let the rest of the public, yes.
So I guess my understanding was that you couldn't make a non-conforming lot any more non-conforming. Is that true? So by moving the house or foundation, even if it was destroyed or by fire or whatever, and if rebuilt it, made it more non-conforming? Because it moved closer, the structure moved closer to...
What?
It does.
Hold on just a minute, please. We have a mic. I don't know, we may not be being recorded, correct David?
We are.
We're being recorded?
Correct.
Okay, so if you could just state what you just said about your thoughts about non-conforming now.
Yeah, my thought was that you can't make a non-conforming lot any more non-conforming.
Right.
So moving the structure completely over to the line would be very non-conforming, correct? Moving it even one foot is still making it more non-conforming. So that was my justification here to say, why should you be allowed to move the house closer than it is? Even though it was built as it was and they used the property differently. They used the walkway. The walkway's not part of the structure. The structure and the building is well within the lot. Whether they decide to use it as a walkway, that's up to them. Mr. Lockwood here could say, no, I don't want you to use the walkway anymore. And they could, he could put up a fence. And then they would have nothing. So a lot of our lots are very tight.
I understand that.
So why, why let it infringe on our lot?
I think saying...
Even if it's only one foot to you, it's one foot to us. Okay?
All right, okay. Is there anyone else that has? Yes.
I have a question.
Wait, wait a minute.
Before we go anywhere, I need to understand.
Pull it up closer.
We talking about moving the foundation closer to the neighborhood land? Or this way? The opposite direction.
Right now, they have two feet, 10 inches of talk and moving the foundation, two feet, so they'd have close to five feet. And that would give them ample room to walk down by plus going to build it.
Okay, so I, I don't understand what the, what the...
Right now, they have no foundation under the house.
I understand.
But if you, in the ordinance, if you put a new foundation in, that gives the planning board the right, if they choose, to move that foundation.
Yep, I understand that too. My question is, the gentleman that just spoke, if I understand you correctly, you're, you're thinking that we're going to move that closer to you, not further away?
That's correct.
Correct. He wants to move. You're recommending that you move that house closer to my house?
I'm not recommend, I'm just saying for your opinion.
Oh, you had the, you had the option to vote on that. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I thought he was this guy.
And the builder and the owner don't want to do that. So why, you know, you're stepping in to go ahead and do that.
He had him on the other side.
I had you on the other side.
He's not figured out.
Yeah, he had the seismic.
All right, I'm with you now.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Yes, sir. Pay attention.
All right, I'm Pete Lockwood, and I am 173 Althea Lane. So I am the neighbor on the north side.
On the other side.
On the other side, so. And I am well aware of the, how close it is between our two properties and that the pathway exists partially on our property. We've known that forever. Been up there my whole life. My grandfather built our camp. We celebrated 100 years last year. So we've got, we've been there for a while. You know, I appreciate what the board is, is thinking and trying to do. And I appreciate that you're looking to protect our properties on both sides so that there won't be issues down the road. And, you know, I have not had a chance to see the plan. I'm curious about that. And I apologize, I wasn't aware of the site walk today either. Otherwise, I would have been there. So, that's all.
Yes, I believe the lady in the front, did you have a, yeah, did you? If you could get up and state your name, please.
I'm Elaine Merritt. I'm the butter opposite of Mr. Lockwood. I just want to put it on the record that, excuse me, there are already two existing septic systems, septic tanks, on that property. One has not been used for probably 10 years or so. And the, the other one is the one they're using presently. And they're putting in a brand-new one, which is wonderful. I just want to ensure that the two existing septic systems are filled in properly and taken care of properly. You know, especially the one of the, the older one is right on my line. So I just want to make sure that that's taken care of.
Sure.
Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
Bonnie, did you have a question?
Bonnie Lord Loughlin, Cape Road. This is a public hearing.
Yes.
And for me, especially a public hearing that has to do with the Shoreland Zone, I am interested in the Shoreland Zone. I also appreciate that the planning board is well-versed in the Shoreland Zone, and I believe you all know about setbacks and so forth. I'm here to please request that you make public any sidewalks that happen. I just picked up a shopping guide that was handy. I see shopping guide ads frequently for other towns putting in notices of sidewalks. So this is a public hearing, and I, I think the public can go on sidewalks.
Yes, they can.
I've asked to go myself. But I just don't understand why we don't put those notices in the, in the shopping guide also. Here's one from Baldwin.
Yeah, I know, I've seen them in here, Bonnie. I know what you're saying.
Newfield, Limerick, just in, just in one issue. So could I have an answer on that? And then I'll ask one other question. Thanks.
Yeah, Bonnie, what did you...
Are you saying that you didn't see it in this week's...
The sidewalk, the sidewalk, Donna.
Oh, the sidewalk?
Sidewalk, yeah, no, no. So we, yeah, we do not advertise our sidewalks currently. There is no reason that we can't do that. And I'm amenable to it certainly. And I don't see what the problem is if the rest of the board believes it's reasonable. And I have definitely seen where other communities do advertise in the shopping guide.
Thank you, Joyce. I feel it's in keeping with the public hearing that the public also gets a chance to go on a sidewalk. I know other towns do it. I never really see us doing it.
We haven't.
Okay. And especially for somebody who's in a butter, not to have known there was a sidewalk, you'd be doing a great service. Our town manager now talks about transparency. I know other people talk, all of other people talk about transparency. So it sounds like that will be something that we'll do?
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay, great. And I was trying to hear and to understand. Could you help me understand?
Wait a minute, excuse me. We can't really have side conversations. I think they're asking, Bonnie's asking the engineer a question.
What is 66, is the structure now 66 feet away from the lake? And then is it grandfathered? So the next structure can be 66 feet away from the lake? Because that's too close for the ordinance these days, right?
Right.
But because it's grandfathered. Thanks for everything.
Anybody else? Wait a minute, let's let the public, and then we'll get to us. Anyone else in the public who has any comments on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Pete, you had a question, we'll open it to the board.
Yes, it seems that the, some time ago, we had a question of whether or not we should publicize the sidewalk. And we made the decision not to, because it would bring so many people, maybe we would not be able to get the initial sidewalk done because of all the questions that would be coming in that were not related to the particular.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Pete. I think that it would be up to the chairperson, whoever that is, to, you know, that it is a planning board sidewalk, but it is open to the public. And it's just like these meetings, the planning board meetings, they're open to the public, but it does not mean they all participate. We do not have an open meeting plan here. We have an open meeting plan, obviously, if it's a public hearing, but at a regular meeting. So I think that it can be controlled. If things get out of hand, it would be up to the chairperson to sort of put the kibosh on it, is the way I look at it. But it's up to the rest of the board what they want to do. That's just my opinion.
Because the, the sidewalk today, I believe parking would be an issue.
Parking can be an issue on a lot of sidewalks, particularly down around the pond. Pardon, Grace?
I have a question for Mr. Long.
Yeah, could you pull the mic up?
I certainly could. So you said that you've been aware of the fact that they've been using this path for many years. Is there anything that is in writing or legally binding at all that if the, if your house sold, or the one next door, that that would change? Okay, so it's just a handshake, it's just a handshake agreement that they can use it? Your property line is as it is? Okay.
Back when my grandfather was still here, he built a stump fence between the two properties. That is long degraded and, you know.
Okay.
I could just make one other question.
Certainly. If you could go on the mic, please.
Maybe just as a point of interest, I'm a member of the zoning board of appeals for Raymond, where my home residence is. We do sidewalks monthly for the different things that are going on in town. And we always notify the butters, and we publicize it. And it's never been a problem.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be major. Any other board questions? No? Let me just look at my notes and see if I do. I just have a curiosity. The pink ribbons on the trees, they mean they're going to be removed? Or is that a lot line?
That's what I, that's what I understand, yes.
Okay, so the fence is actually the lot line? The fence that's on that side is actually the lot line?
The lot line is actually just inside of that fence.
Just inside. No, no, there are pink ribbons on trees. And to me, that usually indicates they're going to be cut. Do you know why they would be cut?
Yeah, they're going, part of the well installation and getting rid of one of those abandoned septic tanks. And the fact that the trees, a couple of them are just too close to the existing structure. So you're not going to, they need room to maneuver.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and you've answered this question about the septic tank. Okay. Okay, that was my question. Anything else? Hearing none. What we're going to do now, because we do have other agenda items, is bring this portion of the, of the agenda to a close. And we will come back and be discussing it once we've gone through the other agenda items. And voting probably, unless there are some questions that need to be answered legally, voting on this before the evening is over.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay or not, whichever. Okay, our next item, and we are running a little on the late side, is Mr. Welch. Hi, thank you for your patience. And you're on San Pon Road?
Yes.
And you would like to add onto an existing building?
Correct.
And could you talk to us about that, please?
So the camp currently sits 110 foot back from the shore. It had a deck on it at one point. It's since rotted off. We just recently had purchased the, the property, I mean, within two weeks ago. But we'd like to bring that deck back and still be within, so they'd put the deck, the house exactly right at the 100-foot setback.
Okay.
There is a garage on the property as well. But off the main camp itself, we'd like to do a 20-by-20 addition. And that does fall within setbacks. I do have some paperwork that will kind of show you, show you that. This is kind of a two-year plan for us. So it does show we do want to do a second floor on the garage. The garage is, like I said, it's an existing structure. And it'd be more of an office. Currently, the camp, it's pretty much absolutely nothing on top floor, absolutely nothing on bottom floor. So we're going to go through the camp and just renovate the camp, bring bathrooms back, just kind of freshen up, new kitchen, things like that. So we're just kind of bringing the camp back to life. So it's, it is all set up, the septic is a two-bedroom, it's set up for a two-bedroom. The camp was rebuilt back in 1990. So foundation's all solid there. I guess, I mean, I guess if you have any questions for me, I mean, I...
I have just one quick question. You said you wanted to add an addition to the garage on the second floor?
Yeah, we want to put a second floor on the garage. And I was going to...
And that would be used for?
An office.
For an office?
Yes.
Would you want a bathroom up there?
As, because it's an office. I mean, I do a lot of work from home. My wife does a lot of work from home. So I know the plan does show a washing machine, but the architect got that wrong. We're not, definitely not putting a washing machine in there.
In your garage?
No.
So the bathroom might replace the washing machine?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? We do need to schedule a sidewalk.
Okay. We'll let the public know.
Okay. We will too.
Megaphone.
Any questions? Anybody?
All the setbacks in there looks good.
Yeah, okay. All righty. Is there a motion to accept Mr. Welch's plan as presented? Daryl made a motion. Is there a second? Bob seconded. All in favor? Okay. We need to establish a sidewalk. What will happen is that in, when we meet again on, I believe it's the 20th...
Okay.
It is.
Of this month, will be the public hearing, just like we had a public hearing tonight for the other people. And we'd like to do the sidewalk prior to the public hearing. So what's up, guys, for public hearing?
Sidewalk?
I mean sidewalk, excuse me.
It's the 20th, that day of that?
On Monday.
It's a, it's a Monday. It's the 20th.
It's two weeks from today.
It's the third Monday of the month, which is our usual.
That's the next planning board meeting.
20th.
Two?
Huh?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock when?
What day?
The Monday before.
That's actually kind of good, doing it right before.
You want to do it the day of, though? That would be the day of. Is that Monday, the 20th? Does the rest of the board have time?
Good for you.
Yeah, that's fine with us, yeah, absolutely.
What about you, Bob?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
But Daryl?
We'll see if we can get you.
Oh, the same day?
Yeah, the 20th. You know San Pon, okay. Daryl, does that work for you?
Are you two o'clock?
Two o'clock on Monday, the 20th.
Okay.
It is my anniversary.
37 East San Pon Road.
Yes, that's the one.
Okay, and so we'll, after that, the same procedure will be followed that you saw tonight.
Sure.
On the 20th.
All right, very good.
And you will be at seven o'clock will be the public hearing? Okay, and we said 10:20.
We'll all be there.
Yeah, we'll all be there.
You guys carpool?
Yes, so that there's not a parking problem.
So Donna, would you put a notice, not only, are you going to obviously send notices to the butters, but would you also put a notice in the shopping guide next week about the sidewalk? At two o'clock?
Can I advertise it when I do the rest of the advertising?
Which is seven days?
Can you just say the sidewalk will be at blah, blah, blah?
Is that okay with everybody?
I don't want to do two ads. I want to just do...
No, I think you can do it.
One larger?
Okay. Just make sure it's obvious.
Is Bonnie here? That's the date, not the calendar.
Well, the other towns do separate, you know, can you do like a smaller ad? I mean, we have the money and the budget. We're going to do the normal butters that we normally do in advertising the public hearing. And then right underneath it, you can do a smaller ad that advertises the sidewalk.
I think I would have room in the one ad to do it. Because the shopping guide has a room. If it's too small, they won't let you publish it.
Oh, really? All right, then expand the...
I could expand.
Expand it and, you know, maybe draw a line under the public hearing. And then in the same ad, you could just draw a line across and then have sidewalk underneath it. Okay, is that all right with everybody?
That sounds like a good place to start.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll see you on the 20th at two o'clock at your house.
At two and at seven.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your patience. Okay, the next is Jamma. Thank you for coming back. We've got all your correspondence. I think that...
Is Todd's and Nathan's.
Okay, Todd and Nathan left that there. Just put it on, yeah.
Give it, yeah. The, to me, from my point of view, the confusion here was when the, as I explained in the letter to you, when the architecture came in with an apartment over your garage. But all that's been not going to happen. So what you currently want is an office with a half bath. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I've got the pictures here if you want them.
Okay, okay, that's great. So this should be pretty simple.
I think so.
It resolves the issue. As long as Craig, you're happy with it?
If Craig's happy, we're all happy.
Not necessarily.
The second page shows... And this is what you received in the evening, too. It's just a hard copy of that.
So the second page is the one that shows the second floor? Yep.
Right, yeah. Anybody have any questions?
This is going to be a round thing anyway, right?
No.
Not heated or anything like that?
No. Unless I bring my space heater in when I get cold. Right, in the shoulder seasons. Exactly.
Is that second floor?
Yes. Does anybody have any questions for Jamma?
No.
No? All right, is there a motion to accept Jamma's plan? Do you mind if I call you by your first name?
No, please.
Showing her office and half-bath on the second level of her garage. Is there a motion to accept the plan with the stairs being on the inside?
Inside, yeah. They were always on, anything I've submitted here, they were always on the inside.
Yeah. Daryl made a motion, Bob seconded. Any questions? All in favor? I will write a notice of decision that you do not have to...
Is there anything else?
You know, and also, I wanted to tell you that I appreciate what you sent in that as far as the application form is concerned. We'll look at it.
It was just an idea.
Well, I, I understand it's from the perspective of someone who's never done this before.
Yeah, which we need one of those.
I can appreciate it.
Which might be good.
Yeah, yeah, it probably will give us some clarification.
Give us insight, anyway.
Thank you, Jamma. Have a good evening.
Great, thank you, everyone.
All right, the next item is Mr. Taylor. Is Mr. Taylor here?
Yeah, he is.
Luke, right?
I'm just really here to introduce myself. My name's Taylor Solari.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, I apologize, I called you Luke.
Oh, no, no.
And your name again?
Is it Taylor Solari? Am I supposed to be up?
Yeah, if you're with Mr. Taylor.
Yep, I am. So my name's... Oh.
Your first name?
My first name's Taylor. Sorry, your first name's Taylor.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we have some confusion. I don't know why you're here then, if you're not with this gentleman.
I was just here, there was open time later, just to introduce myself.
For the...
I, we're new to town. I own a few businesses I was starting out. I just wanted to kind of learn the town and kind of what the town's looking for.
Okay, fine, all right. We'll, we'll come back, we'll come back. Dave, yes, now we have the Mr. Taylor we were looking for. This is for the three-lot subdivision.
That's correct.
And you have quite a bit of information from Flycatcher?
That's the wetland survey. And I had septic beds dug on all three pieces. And I had a plan done with both the soil and the elevations on a large scale, as you requested, both sides.
Refresh my memory with what we did the last time you were here. We didn't accept this, did we?
No, because...
Catch, Pauline.
We accepted as a subdivision.
So now this is a preliminary plan?
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
You don't have a wetland study?
Yes, it's part, it's there.
It's part of...
It's... There's a separate plan on the Flycatchers on, on this. This is, this is the plan that was submitted when it was originally subdivided in '22. The same delineation is on that from the, when you did the solar farm. This piece was actually part of a three-lot subdivision in 2022.
So wetlands study, you need to do that on the study. Show what the wetlands are.
Yeah, I know. But where is, where is the wetlands on, on the map?
It's not on the, on the drawings.
It's not on the drawings.
I had the wetland survey done. I didn't know you wanted him to coordinate that and put that on the drawing of just the land break off.
Now, would we, I, would you agree we need the wetlands on the map?
No.
No?
Probably the property.
Yeah.
Four there?
Yeah.
I'm not doing any driveways. I'm just breaking the land off. I'm just selling land. I'm not selling driveways or building sites or anything. I'm just selling just raw land.
You have to have a reason why you're breaking it off.
To sell tree lots.
That is just not, that doesn't even make sense, Mr. Taylor. Why would you go to the trouble of breaking, going through the subdivision process if all you want to do is sell trees? I mean, it doesn't even make sense to me.
I'm not planning on doing any building. I'm, I'm just, I'm just breaking, I'm subdividing a larger land so people with, that have dreams to build things or do something themselves can actually buy a smaller piece of land. Usually, most people come in, they're not instantly buying a sixty acre piece of land to build a cabin on or recreation or something of that nature. So I'm just dividing it so that they could own something smaller with actually some waterfront. I'm sure that eventually those people would want to be able to do something. They would have to submit everything to the, to the code enforcement officer and comply with everything that's required, but I'm not doing any building.
But the law doesn't allow for that. You have to have a reason why you're subdividing it. It's either for residential, commercial, that's state law, that's not our law.
Currently, it's, what's its zone right now? Residential?
The zone is rural.
Okay, then residential. I guess if I have to. That is what that eight-page document is. If you want, if you want the wetland study to be, to send that to the, to the surveyor to put, to put that on the drawing, I can have them do that. Whatever you want to do, Darrell. I just don't understand. This, this land was broken off in the solar, solar farm, a three lot subdivision, exactly what I'm doing, yet no wetland survey was done on this piece of property, yet it was still, you, you signed it and Joyce signed it.
No, you broke, you broke, you broke off the solar farm.
They, they broke the solar farm off my property and three pieces. I'm just confused, Darrell, as to why you would have broken a three, exactly the same thing here and not required everything here.
Because you didn't have a subdivision over here.
This is a three lot subdivision that you did.
And you have to have a wetland study. That's the way it is.
Is that not what I have there? A flycatcher? It's like an eight-page document, a wetlands?
It just shows pictures.
All you have to do is get somebody who's qualified to go in there and tag what the wetlands are, and they'll put them on the map.
You want them on the drawing that, that closed scale drawing? Then that's fine. I'll do that now. Next.
Well.
It's not, it's, it has to be documented. I had to do it when I did subdivision. It's been around for years.
Okay, so we, we understand that the wetlands have to be on there. It's my suggestion, since we have some questions right now, about whether you can present this as is without having, you know, showing houses and driveways, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that we just take this into consideration and have him come back on the twentieth. I just have a lot of questions that I don't have the answers to in my mind right now. I don't know about anybody else.
The last one I did, which was a few years ago, I even had to show whether runoff was going to be to the second section, and that was in this time.
So when I divided that fourteen acre piece into two pieces, I didn't have to do any of that? Whatever you want me to do, just let me know what else you want me to do.
Sure, what I want you to do is.
No, it's what the law, yeah, yeah, it's what the law wants you to do. So are we comfortable with taking this under advisement until the next time we meet? I, I just don't have answers that I'm comfortable with, and if, I don't know about the rest of you.
So just to be clear, so when he comes next time, he has to have the wetlands delineated on the map?
Yeah, well, you know, I, I, I need to look in the state law, what Darrell is saying that, because this does, this just doesn't fit into my illogical brain, why you would subdivide land to sell trees.
You can't anyway. State law says you can't do it.
I know, it's just, yeah.
Just a question, how did they, how could they divide this, the same property into three lots, three separate lots, and without any designation of what the other two lots are going to be?
Because we dealt with the solar lots strictly.
Right, right, right.
That's all.
But you divided the land off. There were still lots that were not designated with, with the information. I'm just trying to make.
That's, that's called excess land on a subdivision. It's called excess land. You don't have, you don't have to do that.
Well, that's like you have remaining acreage after subdivision up here.
You had remaining acreage on it. That's a subdivision.
Okay, well, Craig had a list of things that, that I had to do last time. I completed them. If there's an additional list?
Well, I don't have a list right now, Mr. Taylor. I just have, I, I have, in order for me to personally to vote on this, I need to do some background work and to look at the state law and see exactly what it says so that we can be, we'll all be on the same page. And, and I'm just not there yet. That's perhaps my fault. Maybe the other board members are there. I don't know.
No, I think taking some time to research law is always good.
Yeah, it's just if, if we don't know what, exactly what the law says, and it's, you know, obviously, we have information on our zoning ordinance, but for a minor subdivision, it's, it's not as extensive as it, as it is with, with a major subdivision. So would you be available to come back in, in, on the twentieth?
I'm getting my knee replaced on Friday, so I don't know if I'll be ambulatory by that time, perhaps.
Okay, well, why don't you let Craig know what works best for you?
Schedule it, then I can come back in.
Because we meet like the first and third Mondays of the month. So if November is, is more convenient for you, that would be fine.
Just one question. So if I was to divide that in half, just into two lots, does that circumvent all this?
Uh, yeah, it wouldn't be a subdivision.
It wouldn't be a subdivision if you divided it.
That may be what I want to consider.
Yeah.
Because this is just getting to be.
Yeah.
Much more since I'm just dividing it off to sell it. So I'll evaluate that and let Craig know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Probably a good idea.
Could you tell me just?
Hold on just a minute. Mr. Taylor, Bob has a question.
Yeah, just a quick question. You got fifty foot right of way on there?
The fifty foot right of way has been eliminated. It's been recorded to eliminate the fifty foot, the one that goes across by the river?
Right, it goes across all three.
Yeah, it's been exterminated, I think is the term they used, and it's been recorded, so it's not there anymore.
Oh, okay, that's good to know. Okay?
I, I just have a.
Yes.
So if you divide it into two, you're still going to be selling it for, for trees?
Yeah, but then.
It's whatever someone wants to do. If they want to put a wildlife sanctuary, I, it's, again, it's just for sale. When I sell it, I don't sell it on, on the listing as a building lot. I sell it as ten acres of land to do what they want. I have no idea what some of the women want to do. Thank you.
He can do what he wants if he just divides it now. It's not a.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. All righty. Yes, the other, Mr. Taylor.
So my name's Taylor Salery. I'm here with my wife Carly. I just wanted to come out and introduce ourselves. We've been living here for two years, actually, last week. We moved from Kennybunk. Currently, I have two small businesses. One is Gold Standard Industries Power Washing. We do commercial cleaning and property care, and we're currently launching a Smoke and Booies Mobile Barbecue and Catering Company.
Where are you doing this?
Uh, so this is going to be a mobile.
Oh, mobile?
Yeah, it's going to be a mobile horse trailer that will kind of team up with a lot of the different wedding venues.
Oh.
And things like that in the area.
Yep.
I have an extensive background in restaurants and hospitality. I actually left the hotel industry this summer to kind of start these ventures. We're kind of just here tonight to listen and learn and get a sense of what the planning board and residents have envisioned for Leamington, and what businesses you're looking kind of to welcome to the community.
We welcome any business that wants to come.
Okay.
As soon as such a that question.
Perfect. Our goal is to kind of grow in a way that kind of fits with the community itself. We really cherish small towns. The reason we came here is because kind of Kennybunk didn't become a small town for us anymore. So we really kind of appreciate what this town is and just kind of want to be a part of it and grow with it.
Where do you live again? I'm sorry.
Uh, we live on Cape Road, currently.
One seventeen.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, one seventeen, okay.
Yep, that's us. So, um, yeah, so thank you for your time. We're just kind of here to listen and learn.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck. Okay. I passed out, would you pass this down to Donna?
That's the Gemma's model.
I passed out a, Jamma had sent in a proposed possible change, making some changes to our application form. And, and, you know, I'm going to ask Donna to look at that and come up with your thoughts, if you would, as well as the rest of the board can look at it. And, I mean, there's no immediacy to this by any means, but she was kind enough to do it and put some time and effort into it. So, you know, I think we should probably look at it and and see if we want to do anything about it. Is that okay with you, Donna?
Yeah, I'd like to have input.
Yeah.
From Craig.
Okay, yeah.
Because I looked at it and I thought it was a building for me, for you, Craig.
But blank.
I didn't realize, both of us, planning and construction.
So that's, those are the kinds of things.
They're pretty comprehensive.
To look at. The other thing, when it comes to applications, Craig and I have talked briefly about it. We, and, and I certainly am guilty here, when Jamma submitted her application, I guess it was the revised one that showed the bathroom on it, and I missed that completely. And, you know, I shouldn't have, and I think we all missed it, although I understand it was brought up on the sightwalk, which I wasn't there for that particular sightwalk. So anyway, I think that what we're going to do is have the applications mailed to us so that we get them the, at least at a minimum, the Friday before our meeting. In other words, if the, if an application were going to be heard, as an example, tonight, we should have gotten the material last Friday. That would give us two or three days to go over it and make sure that we have a familiarity with it. I won't hopefully embarrass myself again, and the rest of us won't either. And the other thing Craig and I talked about, first, we, you, you mentioned Tina mailing them out, but Donna would like to do that. I just, I think you know that already. You know, Tina's new to her job, Donna, and it's a planning board application anyway, so it makes sense for her to do it. And I've told her that it's important to get the, have the top part filled out, the date it's received, because when I do the notice of decision, they ask me those questions, and quite frankly, sometimes I make it up. I just go back and look and see what makes sense on the calendar. So it's important to fill that information in from my point of view, if it's just to help me.
Are you saying these, those would be mailed just to you or to all of us?
No, to all of us.
All of us would get it.
Oh, yeah, everybody.
Can I hand deliver the two on shaving the old road?
If they want them hand delivered, that's fine by me.
That's fine.
Yeah.
She lives.
You can't put it in the mailbox because that's a federal offense.
In the driveway.
Okay, so we've got that issue resolved. The next thing is and, so we've already talked about publishing sightwalks, Donna, right? So you're going to do that. The next thing, everybody got a definition for Airbnb.
Yeah.
We had that, that, that came up, and I just gave this to you guys to, something to start, you know, just critique it and change it or do, like, one of the questions I said, the, the only changes I made to the definition of in was to add Airbnb and add the term Airbnb to the end of the paragraph. And then one of the questions I had in the, if you read the definition of an in, the entrance to the bedrooms is made through a lobby or other common room. Well, that would not apply to an Airbnb necessarily. So we can either correct that language or we can clarify that language. We also need to, and I don't know if this is something the planning board would do, Craig, about language concerning the septic tank requirements as it refers to Airbnbs. Would that be something you would write into your?
Well, typically, the site evaluator would go there and ask them, how many people they plan on being there, because obviously a five, five people at a house versus twelve people at a house.
Right, right.
So they would end up.
So we wouldn't have to do anything in our ordinance?
You might want to put in that, you know, a site evaluator must be contacted to assess the.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense, yeah.
Occupant load.
Shall be. Um, what was the term you was, they, they should be hired or they should be?
Consulted?
Yeah.
Consulted? All right, I'll put some more words. And then the other question I have is, should we just write a separate definition for Airbnb? I mean, we haven't had any here so far. That we know of.
Right.
Yeah. So just think about it, and when we come back on the twentieth, let's, let's make a final decision of what we're going to do about this one. It's, it's such a simple thing. We should be able to get it done quickly. The other thing is, we have got to get serious about whatever referendum questions we're going to put forth for the March Town Meeting. This is one I'd like to do. There were other, I have listed somewhere in my book, or a few other corrections to the ordinance that we need to address, that pretty simple, as I believe, most of them are. So I'll go through and I'll have those for the next time we meet. The other question is the, the definition of a hobbyist and that whole gains thing. I, I have language somewhere. I hope I've, I've shared it with you, Donna, and I, I have it in my computer, so I'll bring that forth because we need to determine whether we're going to put it in there or not or what it's worth, okay? The other thing is that the outdoor event additions to the ordinance, my personal opinion is that as far as the land use table is concerned, we can keep it under, I have to, let me go to the right page so I'm saying the right thing. I think it's page seventy-three. Oh, yeah, I know, it's on page sixty-five. Under the land use table, for principal commercial structures, that's these, it says visual and performing arts. Page sixty-five.
I was trying to find, oh, fifty-five.
So that talks about banks, retail stores, bottle clubs, commercial schools, and it talks about, it really addresses structures. An outdoor event does not, like the one that just occurred at the airport, doesn't include a structure. It's an outdoor event. Can that still fall under the visual and performing arts, even though the title under number twenty-six is principal commercial structures? Does it mean we have to have a, a separate line item for outdoor visual and performing arts?
For the stage, it's a central structure, isn't it?
No, it's a, it's a move, but it's like a tent.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a tent, basically. It's nothing that's permanently there.
Commercial activities.
Yeah. So there also is a.
There's outdoor recreation. If we had a visual and performing arts under that.
Where's that?
That's on sixty-four, number twenty-three. If we.
Oh, yeah.
If we added C to that as visual and performing arts.
Thank you, Grace. That makes all sorts of sense.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. Um, okay, that makes, that makes all sorts of sense. Thank you very much. So there was information that Jason gave me, and I couldn't lay my hands on it today, and I'll have to get it again. It's somewhere at my house. Should be in my bag here. It referred to, and he got this from the lawyer, that had different, or there were like four different sections to this. Let me call them sections. One would be requirements for an event that was going to be under five hundred people. One would be for an event five hundred to a thousand people. One might be from a thousand to fifteen hundred or a thousand to two thousand people. So, and then we put whatever criteria we wanted. Maybe the criteria might apply to all, well, obviously, there might be more, as, as an example, porta potties kind of thing, parking, you know, that kind of stuff would be different if you had a five hundred event as opposed to a fifteen hundred possible attendance event. So we need to, and if we want to have this for the March Town Meeting, which I think we really, really, really must do, we have to remember that we have a public hearing that would have to be held. Then we would give it to, did you find that?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then we would have to give it to the Board of Selectmen. They would also have to hold a public hearing, and Pat, and Patty would have to have the final version by, I think it's January nineteenth or somewhere pretty close to that, by the middle of January sometime. So I don't think this has to be necessarily difficult, but I think it takes some concentrated thought to get it together. Now, I know there is someone, I think it was Mandy and Jacob from down on Evergreen, I got an email from her saying they were putting some thoughts together, and I don't know if there's anyone else here that, yes, I, I know, I thought you did, sir, if you'd like to come up and speak. We, we would hold, you know, we're open to anyone submitting thoughts on what the language should be in an ordinance. It doesn't mean necessarily that we would accept everything, but it means that we, the more information we get, the more thought we can put into why or why not or what if or whatever, that kind of thing. So you can submit something in writing to us, just mail it to the Town Hall, care of the planning board, or you can come to a meeting, like on the twentieth or even tonight, I see. Want to speak, John?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, come to the mic.
I'll, I'll leave a reminder, I realize you're going to go home and everything someday. I've been.
Yeah, I, I was, I knew your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, John Partridge, also known as.
Yes. Yes.
Partridge.
Partridge, at thirteen Evergreen, also known as Jack.
Okay.
Okay. I've been informally asked to somehow contribute, as you've just done, to the general audience, anyway. I've done a very brief review today, in the second half of the afternoon, of various towns who have ordinances. I've got a, what I can do is boil them down to some Acrobat and or documents, doc documents, which can be edited. And perhaps one can, I can distribute it to some separate person who would distribute as you wish.
If you were to drop them off here, we could have them Xerox and mailed out to us. The sooner you do it, the better, to be very honest.
Well, see, I could do it next day or two, if I can make sure that gets into the same format that you can, all computers can read, one being PDF.
You know, if you just mail, can you email them to?
I can do that, yeah. I have, I have an address here for Secretary.
Just mail them here to the Town Hall.
Donna.Sawyer, no.
Oh, yeah, Donna.Sawyer at Limington.
I have that. Yes. LimingtonMain.gov, etc.
And then she'll forward them on to us.
You can scan the document, I can.
They're online, at present, they're online. I can convert them to whatever you need. And.
And then she can forward them to us.
Yeah, yeah. There's a state one, it's very brief, it doesn't apply to us in this case, and there are four or five towns in surrounding area that we can digest and choose from.
Yep, that's exactly what we need to do.
Cut and paste, I'll make it so you can cut and paste it in a Word document.
I think you're getting a little above my capability, but I'll do my best.
You'll be fine.
I need the computer.
I have sons that can, yes. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this subject?
Jason Swanson from the seven Evergreen Circle. My wife's Mandy, probably given you a lot of emails.
Jason Swanson.
Jason Swanson, like the TV dinners. Swanson, yes. I just want to thank everybody for just being at this meeting is light years more insightful than the month of Thursday meetings I've been at. It sounds like there is a lot of talk of, I've heard of responsibility to residents, future buyers, right of ways, notifying abutters, researching the law and stuff like that, and that has been a breath of fresh air.
Part of what we have to do.
And I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I feel like I finally found the right meeting to come to.
I think one of the problems is that sometimes, and this is, the Select Board and the Planning Board play two very different roles in town. And sometimes people confuse that. And sometimes, quite frankly, people think they can go to the Select Board and the Select Board will make the Planning Board do whatever they say, and it doesn't work that way.
Sure.
So, so, you know, and it does no harm in speaking to both boards by any means.
Absolutely.
But just understand they have different responsibilities.
Absolutely, absolutely. I guess my first, you mentioned the numbers in terms of the referendum and the ordinance going forward, the size. The only information that we got from the Select Board as to how many people were gonna be coming to this event that happened last night was initially a thousand. Well, there was three thousand, actually.
How do you know?
Three thousand. That's what the airport, the airport manager put out, was three thousand people came to this last night.
One of the things, Donovan, please. One of the, one of the, I did go to the concert yesterday afternoon. And I thought it was very well handled, personally. I did speak with Kyle, and he's going to put together a pros and cons comment from his point of view. All the things that went well, the things that they need to address, and he's going to give that to both the Select Board and the Planning Board. That will be a big help to all of us in just getting his perspective and then adding to, you know, what else we hear and whatever.
I appreciate it. I guess the only thing that I would just suggest in a, an ordinance going forward, and I'm no expert on the process, like I said, I've just been to a month of Select Board meetings and hearing, I guess, their perspective on it. So I'm purely seeking an education in the process. I'm here to learn. But like I said when I started, I heard wonderful things that was like music to my ears, such as notifying abutters and protecting the properties and respecting right of ways and such like that. And I feel that the, the special event permit that was given to the event promoter at this concert event circumnavigated the wonderfulness that you guys have been talking about tonight. And I think that every one of us that live on Evergreen Circle or at the airport that have hangars that are property owners, there's at least thirty of us. It's next to a residential area. There's a lot of other things that have been talked about tonight that are very, that have so much in common with just neighbors, abutters, people who have a vested interest in what's going on. And we bring three thousand people into a confined area that is not designed for it. It's designed for airplanes, pilots, mechanics, people that know airplanes. And that the Planning Board was circumvented in this entire process, I think.
That was not purposely done at all. I mean, from now on, there will be a conditional use process through this board, but that was not purposely circumvented last time. It was, this was a one-time, a one-time learning experience.
Sure, sure, sure. And I guess that would just be the learning experience, as I would just say, like, if there is, you know, I don't know if it was a misnomer of whether this was a visual and performing arts versus a concert, and there just wasn't a definition for it, and so it was just like, well, I guess it's just.
A concert would be performing arts.
That's what I think, too, but it requires Planning Board approval.
Yep.
And so I'm just wondering, is there a catch? As in, like, what if we call this a circus? And the circus doesn't actually, like, show up in the list, and it's like, well, we can get a special event permit for it.
You know what? That is why we don't do specifics. There is a broad category of visual and performing arts. Common sense has to be applied. If we were to try to list every possible type of event, we definitely would miss one of these.
Absolutely. New ones come up every day.
Exactly. So that's why you have a category like that. And people have to be reasonable and use common sense in applying it, in my opinion.
I guess I'm just looking for some, the pan underneath that catches all the things that fall through. And that it at least comes to the Planning Board. That if there is a lack of a definition, it probably needs to go to the Planning Board, because it needs to be discussed. And that's.
Well, that's like Airbnb, is it?
It's the same thing, yeah, exactly. It's the same thing. And I hear that, and that's a new term, I mean, relatively new in this past decade. And they are, you know, they are going about, and they are disrupting communities, economies, and stuff like that, and it's exactly the same thing. It's, it's a new definition, and, you know, I'd want something to catch that. But that's my, that's my piece, just something to catch, catch things that fall through the cracks, kinda like this. Thank you for your time. Thanks for all you guys do.
Sure, appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes, sir. You can state your name and your street.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Weed, W E E D, forty-one, yeah, forty-one Evergreen Circle. Talking about the event that occurred last night. I contacted today the FISDO in Portland.
Who?
That's the Flight Standard District Office. Because yesterday, Kyle, he had the runway open, and yet he parked cars almost on ninety percent of the length along the edge of it.
He did not park on runway.
He didn't park on the runway. He parked close to the edge, within six to eight feet of the edge, all the way down, which is a violation.
Of what?
Violation of what, what the FAA calls the runway obstacle-free area.
Does that apply to FAA regulated airports? Because this is a private airport, that's, you know.
No, no, it's, it's public use, it's a public use privately owned airport.
Okay. Can you tell me what that acronym was again? F what?
Yeah, F, R O F A.
R O F A, and it stands for regional?
Runway obstacle-free area. As a matter of fact, about, I don't know, I can't remember exactly how many years ago, but the seven or eight years ago, the actual owner of this airport, they had, they had piles of debris. A pilot took off, stalled, crashed, slid, went off the runway and died, hitting that debris. There was a whole, there was a lawsuit, you know, the family won the lawsuit and all that, because that's why you need these free areas.
Okay, so it's runway obstacle-free area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so anyway, I did call the Flight Standard District Office in Portland today. However, because of the government shutdown, they are unfunded. So all I got was a recording saying, sorry, we don't have any money, you know. And because, I mean, there was also numerous other violations. You know, they were, when they were getting, moving the cars out at the end of the concert, they were basically, here, the runway was still open, it wasn't closed. They have a thing called nodums. It's, it means notice to airmen. And when you're gonna, if you're gonna shut down a runway, it has to show in the nodums. It wasn't showed in the nodums, and as they were, like, basically herding the cars out, there was ATVs, you know, by Kyle and company, you know, like, herding them. But they were, they were driving on pieces of the runway, which is another violation, especially when the runway is open. So I'm just saying that, you know, the music, you know, you might have enjoyed the music and everything, but there was like unbelievable amount of violation. I mean, I'm a pilot, I'm just a private pilot, you know, I just do it for fun, you know. I mean, you know, Jason is a, he's a professional pilot. But, and unlike most private, privately owned, public use airports, this one, we have deeded runway and taxiway rights, and the people, even on what we call a hangar row, where it's just small lots, they actually, instead of long-term lease, they actually own those pieces of property. Because the former owner, I don't know if you guys remember Morris Haney, known as Les Haney, he, he wanted to make sure that this place, it stayed an airport, and it didn't turn into a Motel Six or something like that. So he made sure that anybody who bought property in there, including me, right, would have these deeded rights. And so as soon, as soon as he started, started doing things like, he wanted initially to totally close the runway. Well, that's fine if you're doing maintenance on it, you know, you're repaving it. And, but then he found out he couldn't do that, and he was, he was trying to tie up all these things that weren't, that weren't legal. You know, in other words, he's just playing around, doing what he wanted to do. And what we had, when he first became the leasee of this airport, we had approached him and said, if you wanna, you know, do something to make money, you know, talk to us. Well, he seems to be the kinda guy that doesn't wanna talk to anybody, just wants to do his thing and basically the heck with everybody else. That's, I mean, we were surprised when they said that they gave him the okay to do this back on July seventeenth. You know, and I went, what? We didn't know a thing about it.
As I said, this was the first time experience, and it's a learning experience for all of us.
So I'm just telling you, though, I mean, this is, this was like, it may have been fun music, but it was pretty crude. You know, the whole thing was pretty crude.
How do you say crude? What do you mean by crude?
Crude, the way, just what I told you, the.
What, you mean the violations?
Yeah, the violations.
What you suggested is violations.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yeah. Who maintains the runway?
He's supposed to. I mean, the owner, technically, or the guy who's running, running the place for the, for the owner.
My question is, as a business point of view, it would be a great opportunity to work with those people and take some of the money off to maintain the runway. I know at one time, the town was approached to take the runway over, because they couldn't afford to maintain it.
Right.
So why is this a good opportunity to work with the promoter, to get some of the money?
You'll have to ask them, you know. We don't know, you know, the money that they made on this, if they made money on this, which I imagine they did, we don't know where the money went.
Well, I mean, if you have control over the airport, and you work with those people, you could get some of the money to help take care of it.
Of course, but.
And I find it hard to believe that they had that over there, and the runway wasn't shut down while that was going on.
That's right. Exactly, exactly. That's why I'm just bringing this up, because.
I think, I think if I recall, and I can be corrected here, it's my understanding from being at the meeting with the Select Board, that Kyle was going to shut down the runway for the day, for a twenty-four hour period. And I believe that's what he did. There was no.
No, he didn't.
And you say he didn't because why? Because he didn't notify this?
Well, technically, he's not, he can't, he can't just shut it down with all of us having.
But if he owns, but if he owns the runway?
But it doesn't work that way. If he's gonna do, if it's actually gonna do, pave the runway or repair it, right, then he can shut it down. But if he's just gonna shut it down on something that has nothing to do with aviation, he can't do it, because it's, our deeds make, make, give us access to not only the runway, but all the taxiways. That's the, you know, that's like basically a little pass that you, that you taxi on, you know, and.
It would be interesting, just this is me personally talking right now, to see, to see your deeds. I've never, I see Jason raise his name.
Yeah, he's got a file on, yeah.
Thanks. Can I keep this? Well, I think that's, pardon?
Oh, sure. Sure, that'd be great, but at the same time, you know, we weren't even included. Yeah, exactly.
I think that can be clarified.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. We appreciate it. Anything else? Yes.
Good evening. John Gallopo from Tucker Road. I just have basically two issues. One is a quick thing about the airport and the concert. The town does have a website that you can download, the building, well, Code Enforcement Office Permit Application. And on it does say mass gatherings, fifty dollars for the permit fee, which they never got. Electrical permit for the electrical equipment that they had hooked up and generators, which is also on this menu, which they did not get. So now, there right there, you guys and him were circumvented on the fees that this town should have gotten.
Well, that, like I said, that.
So who's gonna pay for those fees? That goes into the coffers for the taxpayers.
Do you know how many years, that will change, John?
Oh, yes, okay. Everything will change.
Well, it is going to.
And also, and also as far as the runway goes, being open, where the grandstand was and all the people, there was actually several airplanes that landed and took off from that spot. It's not that the airport.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That day?
That day, while people were there.
I was aware of one, and they announced that, that one airplane.
A little red airplane that took off. There was a high-wing airplane and another high-wing airplane that landed and took off while everybody was gathered there and the band was playing in the afternoon. I saw it.
I did, too.
You saw those planes, too?
I saw one plane, yeah.
Okay, that was, that one little one was a violation, but there were, okay, two others that did take off and landings right there.
Later in the day?
During the day, the afternoon.
Do you remember what time?
Probably between one and three.
Yeah, okay. I saw the final one, the three o'clock.
Yeah, between one and three.
Okay.
And the next question I have is, which is different, is about the referendums. Which referendums do you handle that goes into the voting?
All of them.
All of them, including the financial ones?
No, 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 no. We only handle referendum questions associated with the. No, 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 we only handle referendum questions associated with the ordinance, with the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
The select board determine which warrant articles go into the running of the town, the budgets, the, you know, in conjunction with the finance board.
Okay.
So we have nothing to do with that, we only have whatever is in here.
Okay, that's all, that's my other question.
Yep.
That's all I needed, thank you very much.
Okay, but the selectmen do have final approval even over our referendum questions. They can suggest changes, they can, in fact, one board in fact did not put something in that we felt should be in, so they have, you know, it's-
I just have a one, one short-
Sure, sure.
This is just one, one other point, um, about the runway being open, but all the cars being parked within six to eight feet from the edge of it. Since he was required to keep, you know, according to our deeds and everything, he was required to keep that runway open, he, if he had found an alternative place to put the cars, which I admit would be tough because there was a lot of them, um, then it wouldn't have been this violation that I was talking about, about the, the obstacle-free zone.
Mm-hmm.
He didn't do that, he just did what he wanted to do, you know, which was just park along the, the runway, you know, six to eight feet away. That doesn't work because, and why they have those obstacle-free zones is if somebody comes down, come down a little hard, or they just, they blow a tire, they just mess up the landing, and they veer off, it's so that something like what happened to this fellow Tony, you know, doesn't happen again, you know?
Right, I understand.
And when it's ninety percent of the runway is, you know, got all these cars, or you, you know, if you were there that late, you saw how many cars were there, there was a zillion, right? Not, not a good, not a good thing, yeah.
Um, how close, on the opposite side from where the cars were parked, how close are the, um, um-
Property lines?
No, 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 wait a minute, I'm, uh, hangers to the runway.
Uh, on a hangar row, the little, the little lots?
No, no, I'm talking about the hangers that are on the evergreen side of, of the runway.
Right.
I noticed that, and rightly so, I would've done the same thing if I were there, there were people sitting in their hangers enjoying the concert. How far off the runway are those hangers?
I don't know, how, how-
It's seventy-five feet for a structure, and a hundred feet from the property of the airport for a, to reside in.
Okay, so the hangers was-
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet from the runway, okay, thanks.
It should, it should be that deed as well.
Yeah, okay, I haven't read it yet, yeah, okay.
Thanks again, thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments from the board? Hearing, oh, minutes, we have to do our minutes, sorry about that, that's, this will take-
And we have to vote.
Uh, we, we're gonna do them quick, 'cause there's a football game on tonight.
Oh!
Well, thank God for football games, so we can get out.
Oh, wait a minute, we have to, we have to vote on, um-
Yes, yeah, a whole bunch.
Yeah, okay, sorry, guys.
The game's coming on.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay, that's okay, that's all right, all right, let's get serious here.
Yeah.
Um, starting with Jamma, we did vote to accept her revised plan.
Yep.
So, in the notice of decision, and, and we don't have to vote on this, you just have to tell me if I've included everything, um, in the notice of decision, it will be that she can have an office and half bath upstairs.
Yep.
Yep, exactly.
That there will be no other, um, development, or what's the right word, no other usage of the upstairs? What's the right word?
Not to be used as a residential?
No residential use. Of the upper level.
Right.
Anything else? Um, 'cause the last time when I wrote a notice is that she isn't, I mean, she meets, she meets all the setbacks.
Everything else was fine, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, so then we have the, um, site plan for the Sutyla, yeah. Sorry about my notes, I have allergies. Um, I think the biggest issue here, okay, so, so one of the things that, um, old septic tanks have to be removed. Um, I think the biggest question, I have, to me, the biggest question here is, can we, as a planning board, legally require our, um, not require, can, can we legally allow them to infringe, even though the gentleman agrees that it's okay, on his property? And so with that, in my mind, I think the building should be moved over, I mean, and I'm thinking, I think we have a responsibility to, right now, nobody's gonna sell, nobody's gonna move, everybody's gonna die sooner or later, and everything changes, and I think that we as a board have a responsibility to, um, ensure that the lot lines are properly located, excuse me, not infringed on. I mean, that's exactly what we did to Jamma, she had to, you know, make some lot line adjustments, if you will, so I'm curious to how everybody else thinks.
I have a question.
Um, but let's hear what everybody has to say, usually that's the-
I think there should be a setback to five feet.
On the gentleman's side, that-
Yes.
On Lockwood's side?
On the back corner. That gives him-
On the propane side, you mean, on the propane?
Be the closest to it, and they're moving the building back, which means that that corner is gonna come closer to the line, correct?
No.
Mark, that's-
You're saying the building back, he's saying it has an angle-
It's not coming-
That's not correct.
No, he's not moving it back. The, the building is not being moved back, it's in the same-
No, he's adding an addition to it.
And the adding, well, that's the next thing, is the, adding the, the depth to it, yeah.
So that's not correct. So the setback of the two foot ten is going to remain exactly as it is right now. So, the only thing I would say is that if the current owners or future owners put up a fence on the line, three feet is enough for a person to walk by. They can walk by three feet if that ever came to fruition, so, um, so if the building is there and somebody, again, intended that, so don't-
I'm talking about the propane side of the building, that's the only thing in my mind how I can respond.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and right now, there is not three feet, correct? Is there three feet?
Right now, the setback to the building is three feet.
From whose lot line?
From this gentleman's lot line.
Exactly, two foot ten inches.
Correct, two foot ten inches.
Yeah. All right, so they're not infringing on him? Did my missus understand something?
So, the, the issue is, the building is two foot ten inches away from the property line, so there is walkway, there's space in between the building and the lot line, which is two foot ten inches.
Which doesn't infringe on his property, correct?
Correct, so the building itself is, does not overhang the property. It's, it's the fact that between there-
It's the walkway.
No.
It's, it's, it's access, yes, it's access. But if they put in a fence, similar to if you were in the city of Portland, if you were in an alleyway that was three foot wide, you could walk down the alleyway.
Yeah, yes, yes, I agree.
So if they chose to put, or future owners chose to put in a fence, or whatever it was, you would still have three feet between our proposed building, and it's this one pinch point that we're talking about specifically. It's not like it's a hundred feet long, it's not like it's ten feet long, it's one pinch point.
Okay, so you would move the propane tank to the other side of the building?
That propane tank was not going to be in the same location.
Okay.
So again, brand-new building, brand-new everything.
Okay, I pers, then I, I don't have a problem, uh, part, now I'm talking about me personally, the other board members can say whatever, I just thought that, um, it infringed on this gentleman's property, the, and I, I obviously misunderstood something, but if there is in fact three feet between the house and, and the Sutyla's, Sutyla's lot line, that's-
It's actually two foot ten, to be, to be consistent.
The question is, the planning board can make, can make it more, and I'm, I'm making a motion, it's five feet, now you people can all vote for your own.
Okay, but what, so why would you make?
Because it's ea, it's much easier to get down through there at five feet.
But they don't care.
Move it down through there.
If they're happy with it, and he has a mind-
Yeah, okay, okay, this is not, this is not a public hearing.
If it moves on three feet, it's not enough to get down through there very easily.
Well, I, I walked down there today, and I wa, I mean, I didn't-
This is my opinion, I'm not, I can vote on it.
Right, okay, yeah, okay, all right, Darrell made a motion that the, um, sideline, the, Darrell made the motion that it be a five-foot-
Setback.
Setback from the, which side is it?
Well, it'd be the left rear corner from the driveway.
Left rear top-
Left rear corner of the driveway, that's what he said.
It's not a reasonable request, I mean-
Yeah, is, is there a second?
And we, and we can do it under our, so it's up-
So you're, you're trying to talk about moving that foundation to three feet?
But, but, no, 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 this is not a public hearing now, public hearing has come and gone, excuse me.
Can we, you know?
You said, you said that they didn't have a foundation, but they do have a foundation.
I'm sorry, this public hearing is closed. You had a comment, Bob?
Darrell, when you were proposing five feet, you're only talking about moving that foundation, two feet.
Yeah.
They already have, it's three.
Right.
Can we clear on that?
Oh, so, so you're not talking about, okay, all right, I misunderstood.
You want to move it twenty-four inches to this one.
Okay, I misunderstood what he said, so what Darrell is saying is that they already have two feet ten inches, and he wants, he's moving-
He wants to move it two feet, two inches.
He's made a motion that it move two more feet over, and you have, how many feet, eighteen?
Five feet, five feet.
No, how many feet on the other side do you have?
Eighteen.
In the line in the corner of the building.
Yeah, I know, but I'm talking about-
How many on the other side, between the building and-
Sixteen feet.
There's sixteen feet on the other side.
A little more than sixteen, actually.
I don't see, I don't see what I see.
So it's just a total of two feet?
Yeah, be it.
Not five?
Right.
It says eighteen and one quarter setback.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So it's eighteen feet to play with?
Right, so the, so, so the motion is to move the building two more feet.
Or five foot setback.
For a five-foot setback, that was the motion, is there a second?
No second, no.
Bob made the second, any discussion?
I'm comfortable.
Craig, any thoughts?
Whatever you guys decide.
Bob, any concerns? Well, when I, when I looked at this plan originally, um, this afternoon, that was my thought too, that it's, that the, in, in reading the ordinance, the planning board does, because there's no foundation under there, and they're gonna be putting a new foundation, a foundation, yeah.
A new foundation.
Yeah, yeah, well, right now it's just on blocks.
There's any, but that's a foundation, blocks are a foundation.
I said new foundation, I didn't, I knew that that wasn't a foundation.
But I'm the one who said that, my mistake.
So, can I just make one statement as you're trying to decide?
Yeah.
So, we have an access point that the, the owners of this property are aware of, next-door neighbors don't wanna move closer to their property. The current owners understand the agreement that's been in place since, you know, um, a long, long time ago, and there's some things there, but the-
I mean, we're okay with it, it's always been that, but we're not, I, I like the idea of-
All right, could you go to the mic?
Well, can I just finish my statement first, and then you can talk about, I-
Yes, okay, yeah, yeah.
I, 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 I'm not trying to speak for you, sir, I, I apologize on that, so, my point really is, if they decide at some point that this just isn't working, or a future owner, that they can pull up a fence, and the current owners of this house understand that and are fine with the two foot ten, 'cause they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with it, it's access, they can get access through, worst-case scenario, if they needed to change access and go around the other side, they could do that, you know, if that came to it with the, with the sixteen feet, or eighteen feet, whatever it is, so, all I'm trying to say is, we're not asking for this, and they, you know, they certainly don't want it, I can tell you that right now, so, you know, if you're just changing it to change it to get more access, nobody's really asking for that.
Okay, and sir, you had a comment?
So I just, I just wanted to clarify, because it's, seems like people are saying that it, we're okay with it the way that it is, it's just the way we've lived with it, because we've always known that it was that narrow. If there's an opportunity to increase that, that distance, as Mr. Hubbard has suggested, um, I would be happy with that.
Okay, Bob, you have?
I do, um, I understand what you're, what you're saying, and, but I wanna understand a little bit more, there's eighteen feet between you and the, and the proposed building if they don't do anything. I'm trying to see where is the hardship if we gave them another four to two, what, what, what is the problem with it, I guess?
So-
Other than, you know, granted, it's two feet closer, but what am I missing? Am I missing something here or what?
But just wait a minute.
So, i- it's not necessarily a hardship, part of what we discussed on site, and I'll, I'll bring it up now, is that when you're dealing with, um, existing setbacks, we'll call them grandfathered setbacks, um, then the rule is, is you don't wanna make it more non-conforming than it is, so when you're talking about that. So even though we'd be, let's just say we take it to the five feet, so we'd be moving the building two foot two, um, from that one setback, which is the north setback, but we'd be moving it closer, and we don't, we're already non-conforming on both sides, so now we're going to be making it more non-conforming on the south side setback. So that, I mean, if we're meeting all those grandfathered setbacks, I just, I wanna make sure, so typically when we talk about this in the rule of law, and, and this non-conforming stuff, you, you're trying not to set yourself up for an appeal, whether it's the town, whether it's us, whomever it is, so when we say not making it more non-conforming, to me, that's making it more non-conforming on the south side setback, even though you have room over there, doesn't matter, that was the way the building was constructed years ago, and, and, you know, that's what we're dealt with. So that's why we came in with this proposal, we were talking to Craig about that at the very beginning, and, and just saying, this is what we're trying to do, and keep it all within those lines that are currently there.
Well, I guess, I guess the other piece that is, maybe we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Sir, you wanted to say something, I let the other gentleman speak, so, you need to go to the mic, please.
I think you mentioned in that law or citation, you said that because it's a, now another foundation, so it currently is a new, a, a foundation on the house now, correct?
According to the design, the engineer, that the, the-
So does that code that you've mentioned that allows the planning board to make this decision to move the house anywhere they would like?
Not anywhere they would like.
Well, well, you're saying, one foot before it was one foot, now it's two feet, he could've said three feet, and you would've gone three feet, so where does it stop? The house, it has a foundation, he's making the house bigger, going back on the setback, and not encroaching on the lake, on Mr. Lockwood's, or on ours. Why not just let that ride?
I have a question for you, the fence you put in is right on the line.
No, it's not on the line, it is actually six inches on our property line.
So you can service it from their side without being on their property, you can service that side of the fence, which is your fair need to service.
We don't need to, it's there, we didn't wanna put it there because that would've infringed on their property, so we put it on our property.
No, you couldn't put it on that block anyway, you, I don't think we have that law, like I have a fence, I put mine five feet away so that I could take care of my fence without infringing on, on those people's property, so you talk about infringing, I feel you infringe when you put your fence on it.
Well, I applied for a permit here, and you guys granted- Well, I applied for a permit here, and you guys granted me a permit to exactly do what that is, so, if that's something you wanna change, I-
Okay.
That's a different story. We're not infringing on their, and they're moving, your code basically says, you cannot make a non-conforming lot any more non-conforming to me, or to Mr. Lockwood, so, it is what it is. That's all we're asking.
Yeah, I understand.
It's not, it's not like, you know, future sales, or anything-
Well, I just wanna clarify one thing, if I may. Engineer.
Yes.
The lot line next to 163, this gentleman's lot.
173.
173, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The Sutyla's are not infringing on his property, I, I've, for however my mind has worked, I have gotten the feeling that it, that they were using a piece of his property to, to, to accommodate their house.
So-
That's not what I'm understanding.
Well, that's what I want clarified, 'cause I don't understand it.
So-
You're telling me that's not true, right?
Well, I'm trying to make sure that we're-
Where are the stone steps that go down there, we all know where the stone steps are.
So, some of the stones that have been placed there by the grandfathers, were, and this was before surveys were, were there, are on that adjacent property. So, the land use is there, but the building is not, the building is not infringing on the property, but the land use, I mean, people have used it as a natural walkway, I'm not saying it's okay, I'm just saying that's the way it's been done for years, because people used it that way. I'm saying-
The building in no way, shape, or form encroaches on this gentleman's property.
That is correct.
That's, that's the issue, in my mind.
And they could change the walkway to conform to-
Or they could put it on the other side.
Move the, move the bricks.
Right.
Yes, yes, to all those questions.
Okay.
Okay, all right, ready?
Yep.
My, I guess my opinion is, I probably will vote no on this, I don't know if the rest of you will vote.
Can I, can I read what it says, whenever a new and large to replace foundations constructed under a non-conforming structure, the structure of new foundation must be in place, except our requirements meet the greatest practical extent as determined by the planning board. Period.
You're on page seventy?
My opinion is, it should be five feet, we took, well, you seconded it, so, let's vote on it.
Just, oh, wait a minute for me.
It's entitled to their own vote.
Yeah.
Except me, I can't vote.
I get a hundred percent where you're coming from, and, under any other circumstances, I'd vote with you, but-
I mean, this two feet thing is blows my mind, I mean-
It is tight, but there is no camp down there, it's not like, at all like this.
All right, the, the motion then is to have them move the cottage of the house over two feet, all those in favor? All those in favor, of, all those in favor of your motion? All those opposed? Motion denied, so the house stays where it is. I think in the notice of decision, I will put in that the walkway has to be moved, either taken out, or get some, it has to be removed from this gentleman's property. Does the board agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 We're gonna remove all the existing septic tanks, too.
Right, I've got the, the, remove the septic tanks, um-
Knock them in, throw them in, whatever they do.
What, what?
Knock them in with a shovel, or throw them in.
And the walkway is removed, and there won't be any problems with anybody buying the property later?
Right, right, they will not be infringing.
They're filled with sand, or-
And to move the, remove, either move or remove the propane tank.
We did that with my dad's.
Move or remove. Or I should say, just remove, remove-
Remove or fill in.
No, I'm talking about the propane tank that you were there, remove the propane tank. Which side of the, I'm sorry, which side-
That's the north side.
It is the north side. I didn't really know that, 'cause it's-
All right, is, is there anything else that needs to be addressed, let me see what I can-
They're gonna be cutting down a bunch of trees, so we probably oughta write something in there, let's replace them tree for tree.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Uh, but only the trees that were marked with the pink ribbons?
Yeah, there's like twelve of them.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh.
I saw three next to the building, okay.
Oh, no, there was one more.
Uh, were they down near the-
There was some on both sides.
Okay, re- so-
There was some as you came in the driveway, and then there was some to the right side at the house.
Right, I saw those. The ones that are back away from the house, are they in the shoreline zone?
Well, it'll be anything within the first hundred feet.
Okay, so they would fall within a hundred feet? If you're gonna, if, but why, why are they taking those down?
Well, you're gonna be able to dig a hole for a foundation with them there.
No, I know those trees right next to the, that right next-
On both sides of the house.
Okay, so there's no, there's-
Two feet on one side of the house, and eighteen on the other, both sides.
So, there are no trees behind the garage that are going down?
I think there's two.
Okay, so, so, why would you replace something that's gonna impose on the septic system?
Well, that's what it says in the book, you cut a tree, you replace a tree.
They don't have to go in the same place, do they?
Put a tree on the septic system.
Well, no, you can put on a septic system, but, I mean, you gotta have a, you have brown coverage, there's brown coverage there now, you cut the trees down, it's not gonna be there.
Okay, all right, so, replace trees to be removed?
Well, that's not practical either, you're gonna take another one of small trees.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think you'd have to replace them tree for tree. Do you?
So, you're gonna-
Does it give, does it give a dimension, though? Doesn't it give a dimension for what?
It's three inches at three feet above the ground, or four feet above the ground.
So, any, any-
You can take down dangerous trees.
Without replacing them?
Uh-huh.
Without replacing them?
So, how many do you have?
Sounds good.
Well, they, they had six or eight trees in the back of the house before they put the garage there, and now those are gone, and no trees are there now, so now they got a big wide open area.
Mm-hmm.
Where there are no trees.
Just between the house and the garage? That's an open area, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's pretty, it'd be six or eight trees there now.
Well, I mean, let's face it, when you'd have construction, you gotta move trees, it's either that, or don't build a bloody thing.
And no trees up there, doesn't bother me, no.
All right, how, what, what do you want in there about replacing trees?
Probably replace, what if we replace trees over a certain size?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it, I think.
You know, if you're cutting down a tree that's-
There's some of them that are like this.
Six inches, seven inches.
Some of them are zapping, there's about- Replace trees of a certain size, they're saying. Um, I, I have to admit, I'd have to look in the book to see, I, 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 for some reason, three, a two and a half inches and three inches isn't in my mind, but I don't mind me.
Yeah, that's like four feet off the ground, but I mean, if you're cutting down a, a tree that's a foot in diameter-
They can't hear you down here, Bob, Bob, and there are a couple down. Bob, nobody can hear you, if you're gonna talk into this.
You know, right, here again, I think we're gonna run into a situation where what the book says and what's practical are gonna be two different things, you're not gonna be able to, you're not gonna be able to replace tree for tree in all cases, but maybe if we said that any tree that's removed over a certain diameter, and I don't know what that is, let's just say it's eight inches for the heck of it, replace those, anything smaller that needs to go in order to make all this happen, then, you know, you don't need to do that.
But where would they replace them, like, if the trees, I think one of the trees that's by the fence might be six inches, but that's where it would infringe on the septic tank, is that correct?
Septic tank is near the, the driveway itself.
Okay, so that would-
We just, we just eliminated two old septic systems in these fields, we could certainly put a tree there.
Yeah.
Well, there's septic boxes, so those will be removed, that's part, part of the reason why there's trees removed on that side. They can, they can find places to plant, you know, the two and a half inch DBH trees that you're talking about.
Yeah, well, I think to the extent possible, I think we can sit here and say, you know, you cut down twelve trees, you need twelve trees, and you haven't got the square footage to do it. I think to the, to the extent possible, we should, or practical, I guess is the better word.
Yeah, I think you have it documented in your ordinance on H, H, or A?
Yeah, it's in there, but what I'm saying is, I'm not so sure we can wedge that into the situation, we might need to do, you know, we might, might need to do, you know, just like we're doing with the house, I mean, if you're gonna build a, a house, ideally, we'd have you way away from the water, and, and, you know, thirty-five feet are-
I think what you have is to just be dedicated here.
It doesn't talk about trees, it talks-
I don't know if that matters.
It talks about vegetation, which doesn't have to be a tree. All right, let, let, we're, we're dragging this on now.
We'll work on that.
No, no, we have to come up right now, because it's a notice of decision. Replace the three trees that are next to the, yeah.
With bushes and stuff like that, too, it's gonna be the same thing, you don't need for a tree.
Right, right.
That's true, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, anything else?
Not that I can think of.
That takes care of the, the things that I have written down here, okay? So, those will be in the notice of decision. Was there anything else we had to vote on? No, we have to vote on-
We have to vote on the, uh-
What? We, 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 we need a, a vote, uh, yeah, okay, but we need a vote, we did not vote on the Saito. Did we, we, we voted to accept her application last time, we just heard what the gentleman said, we didn't take a vote to approve or disapprove it. So, we need a motion to approve the, a property at 171 Althea Lane with the conditions stated by the planning board.
Don't make a motion, we accept.
Is there a second? Somebody make a second to approve the Sutyla?
I'll second it, I'll second.
Victoria did, all those in favor?
George, do you make the vote?
Yes, I made the motion, okay, so you're all set, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I think Darrell's opposed.
Huh?
I didn't vote for him.
Darrell's opposed.
Darrell was a no, Darrell was opposed.
Does that mean it's to pass?
Yes, 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 yes. Um, what, what did you say we need to vote on?
We need to vote on Route 25.
I thought we already did, we just asked them to bring in the guy. Well, we're talking about the, Todd and Nathan, um-
Yeah, we do have to-
We have to vote on accepting their plan?
Correct.
Right.
So they can start building.
Okay, okay, all right, is there a motion?
There is, I make a motion, we accept.
Bob is making the motion?
Yes, that we accept the affordable building supply and-
Victoria's second?
I second it.
Well, I haven't finished the motion yet.
Sorry.
The, the motion to accept the plan for the affordable building supply and greenhouse located on whatever, off of Lane it is, whatever number it is, and Victoria seconded that. All those in favor?
No stipulations?
I oppose.
You are opposed?
Yeah.
To, to-
The Todd and Nathan one?
To Todd and Nathan?
Oh, no, no, I thought you was talking about-
No, 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 no.
Well, we got you down on the one.
We got you, no on the one?
We heard you on the one.
But, supporting Todd and Nathan, got it?
I'll take care of that. Are there any special conditions that you guys wanna put on Todd and Nathan? I mean, they obviously have to meet, they have to reclaim-
Right, reclaim the three point two acres of what land?
Reclaim three point two acres of what land?
As per EPA specifications.
As per EPA specs. Uh, appropriate, um-
Landscaping?
Landscaping and, what, yeah, landscaping by the building is what we really talked about.
We talked about that, yeah.
One thing that we did not discuss, that really doesn't have a big bearing on that, but it, we, we usually talk about lighting.
Well, there are Noah Butters, right?
There's Noah Butters, so-
So, we would just put lighting that does not infringe on, um-
A Butters, or-
Right, infringe-
Yeah.
On Route 25 or a Butters.
Yeah, and the only other thing I can think of is that any sign would need to-
Sign needs to be approved-
In a form, yeah.
By the CEO.
Yeah.
Anything else for Todd and Nathan?
The same lighting going in the driveway to the building, is that on them?
Yeah, I mean, that's on them, but-
Okay.
Okay, everything else?
I think we're good.
All right, all right, all right. Hanging in there, David. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
We do the minutes next, the minutes next time?
Yeah, I think we should do the minutes next time.
I think that's a good idea, we'll do minutes next time.
Keep, make sure, um-
Well, I tell them the minutes.
Teams, waiting for the most.
And you'll have lost him by the next meeting, so, you know.
Can I take a minute to say one thing?
Sure, yeah.
Everybody has a right to vote, and I respect that, but they didn't take into consideration my opinion of the environment, he said he would welcome the relief-
Yeah.
From them using his property, he just voted no for some, they could've easily moved that to two feet, and I'm very disappointed that I didn't go over it, but, I, I can't, I mean, if he hadn't get up and said anything, I could've seen it, but, he, he, you know, he was asking for some relief, because they are using that property.
Well, I, in, in the notice-
Well, she did put in the notice of decision, they had to move the walkway onto their own property. Probably.
Well, that's, I mean, that's up to Craig to enforce it, that's why we had a vote.
Yeah, just go to the lake and make sure they're not walking on his property.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Victoria's seconded, all of them are.
He's the one who, am I wrong?
He didn't wanna do it.
He didn't, no, and, and I think he realized that you were right, because he didn't argue it.
It was, somebody was hot before, and now they're cold. David, did you have a comment?
Are you adjourned?
Are we off? Wait just one minute, please, is Ben in there?
Ben isn't there.
Ben, please turn us off.
I don't really know why.